Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is June 15, 2023. Before we start, I just want to say that for those of you who are joining us remotely, we just ask that you be aware and keep yourself muted. If you do want to address the commission, please raise your hand. We'll call on you. You can unmute, or we can do it from this end, I think, right, Dylan? And we'll ask for your questions, or your comments, or concerns. We ask that you try not to talk over each other, because we want to make sure that we have a clear record for our recording secretary and our minutes. All right. I will say that there's a couple of item issues that I just want to bring up. We are going to be postponing the minutes that were set to be approved, minutes from the June 1st meeting, and so we will not be taking a vote on that. And that is item four on our agenda. And also, there's a public hearing for subdivision of Kokomo Brothers Wilkes-Pown Road, but the applicant has requested that the hearing be continued, so we won't even be discussing that at all. So if you're here for any of those items, they will not be part of this meeting. All right. And so I'll ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance before we dig in. Thank you. Also, because we have some of our regular members, Brian Rogan, and also Scott Hamel, who is not here yet, we're hoping he shows up, but I'm going to ask Steve Biella, who's our alternate. Steve, you're online?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just save your voice. We know you have laryngitis. I've informed the group. So, but we appreciate you being here and offer any comments as you can. All right. Terrific. What? Oh, yes. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and this is more for, okay. Just everyone silence your cell phones, please, so that we don't have interruptions. Thank you. All righty. So we've done, we'll ask for, I think we actually did the roll call, but go ahead.
Okay. June Daly here, Andrew Lou Millard here, Anne Jorsey here, Jim Zigma. Brian Rogan, not yet. Chairman Veely. Scott Hamel, not here. Steve Biella is here. We heard him speak, and we hear, we understand he's having difficulty communicating by voice. And John Dagan.
Yeah, which I think is, I think he's making an attempt to get here, but that's good. That's good. Okay. Moving on, we have the scheduling of public hearings. We have the proposed text amendment of Newport, 848 Farmington Avenue LLC to amend Section 8F of the Berlin zoning regulations. Now, the suggested date for this is the 20th of July. So I guess, do we have a motion, or concerns, or whatever?
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing July 20.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion? And all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Onto commission business. The first is a review and recommendation in accordance with 824, the Connecticut General statutes, for a lot line revision to add .25 acre portion of 143 Percival Avenue to Percival Field parcel map 8-4, block 54, lot 69, for the sale of the 143 Percival Avenue, which happens to be 4.65 acres after the lot line revision, and for the lease of a 4.15 acre portion of Percival Field parcels map 8-4, block 54, lot 65 of all the shown. The survey of Angus McDonald. Please, if you're online and joining us, please mute your microphone as we're having feedback here. Thank you. Survey of Angus McDonald, Gary Sharp and Associates Incorporated. This was dated October 4, 2017. All right. So.
So, I'm, I'm not sure if Jim wants to take this, or he wants me to take it. Jim Mahoney's online, and he's actually, I think, much smoother as far as describing what's happening, but I'll give a little background. A number of years ago, the Knights of Columbus was a parcel, was approved for senior housing development, and it, part of that approval included some transfer of property to the housing authority from the town, and how that would all work out as they're, we're getting closer and closer to moving forward with development of the parcel, hopefully, for senior housing. There's been some items to rectify with regard to the use of the field, and where the lot line is in relation to the fields that exist, as well as an easement area, and the lease line versus what's going to be sold to the housing authority ultimately for the development. So if you don't mind, I'm going to turn that to Jim. Let me just say, I took the map that I believe you all received, or that was actually included in your packet. There's another map that isn't marked up. I marked it up in areas just so that you could delineate what is going on. It was very hard to see with the weights of the lines in the original drawing. We do have a better drawing. We can bring up it if necessary, as you may.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you. Yes. The Planning and Zoning Commission has seen this, and for 824 reviews in 2010 and 2014, but the project is somewhat modified since then. So the council recently authorized the town manager to close on the property once the housing authority has financing. And Joe Vajorski's on, but he can elaborate if you need, but I believe that they plan on closing on their financing in July, so that is coming up. And so we evaluated the old 824s and decided we needed a new 824 review. As Maureen said, I'd describe it in three parts. One is, there's a portion of the Percival Field baseball field that's actually on the 143 former Knights of Columbus property. So the first thing we're going to do, yes, thank you, and the first thing we're going to do is, we're going to revise the lot lines to keep all the baseball field, put all the baseball field on the Percival Field property. Okay, so that will avoid any batted balls, or having to move the fences in in the future, or whatever. So we get that straightened out. Then the second, yeah, go ahead.
So that's the pink line on the colored map?
Yeah, just not the, yeah, just the top part of the pink line.
Just the top part, sorry.
Yeah, just that little triangle up there. Yeah, right, where the baseball field is. So then, the second change is that we determined that a portion of the property that was to be sold to the housing authority, that former, next to the former, next to the soccer field, that yellow area, is actually encumbered by an ease, conservation easement to the state of Connecticut, because we got funding for field improvements on Percival Avenue, Percival Field, so therefore, we put a conservation easement on that whole parcel. So we couldn't sell the parcel to the housing authority, so we went through some negotiations with the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and they agreed to allow a 30-year lease with renewals. So the way we're structuring this is that we would sell the former Knights of Columbus, the green portion, that is less the, less the little sliver we're keeping for Percival Field, right? And we would lease the housing authority the yellow portion, which right now is, you know, basically south of the soccer field. It's a wooded area. You can see there's some wetlands on either side of that, but they, as I understand, they would plan to do like walking trails, that sort of thing, through that area. And it kind of goes between, you know, the Knights of Columbus and their Marjory Moore property. So it makes sense in that, in that regard. So that's, it's kind of a three-part thing. First thing we're going to do is revise those lot lines, and then we would convey the Knights of Columbus property and the lease, and lease the portion of Percival Field to the housing authorities, so that they can develop affordable senior housing. And I know that Joe's going to be back in front of you in the near future, hopefully, with some revisions to his plan. He's going to be doing 52 units is the plan instead of 50, and the like. So they'll be presenting new site plans and special permit plans, et cetera, but that, that will be subsequent to the closing of the financing. Happy to answer any questions. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Where is Marjory Moore? I just want to make sure.
East, yeah. Yeah, like east of the yellow line there, so the bottom of the, the bottom of the page, right? Wait, that's the soccer field, and then below the soccer field, like, kind of, you know, we just, yeah, right, right, down to this, in that area, right?
Yeah, where the cursor is, that's Marjory Moore property right there.
Yes, yes.
Can I also see where the? I want to see where the wetlands is on this. I just, so we could.
It's shaded, yeah.
In the shade, in the shade of gray. So they're proposing that if the leased area is approved, that they'll be doing walking trails. So are they going to have to bridge over the wetlands?
No, they probably walk around it. I mean, basically, right now, there's a, I mean, there's a kind of a trail around the perimeter on that, on that, let's say, south side of a soccer field, outside the fence. So they'll have to loop it back. And we're actually, as you, I, you probably remember, we, we did a new walking bridge from the town hall to, over, toward Percival Field recently, and we got an easement from the housing authority to create a connection, so that we can go from the town hall complex, the library, et cetera, and walk over to Percival Field. And then there is a concept, you know, Parks and Rec is doing a project where they're improving the soccer field, and we did have a bid alternate for continuing the trail out in the other direction toward the pool, which was above the price, but we're probably going to do it as a separate project, so we'll be talking about that in the future. But long and short of it is, we would, I would expect that the walking trails will come back, you know, to the perimeter of the soccer field at the southeast corner of the leased property, and then connect it to these trails that we're, we're developing to connect both to Marjory Moore and to the town hall complex.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe can correct me. Joe could correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. So if you look on the map, you'll see the pink border. That's where the, the trails would come in from the town property onto the conserve property, so we wouldn't have to cross any wetlands. And the trail would basically run alongside the property line roughly, and access both Percival Field and the housing, the housing authority Knights of Columbus property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
No. I was just curious, and maybe I wasn't following, but so it's, if it's being leased, then it's private? It'll be considered private for the trails?
No, there was still public access. Correct, Joe?
That's correct. We do, we do what we did with the Marjory Moore Trail, and basically, you know, I guess, come up with an agreement or an easement.
Easement, yeah.
Easement or a separate agreement, basically governing the use and the access of the trails and maintenance and things like that.
Okay.
The town would still retain ownership of the land. Because of the way this project developed, the ground, the site's already been approved. It's been through planning and zoning, and the entire part, the entire two parcels are that site plan. So in order to break it apart would be prohibitively expensive from the consulting engineer standpoint, and the, you know, we are actually using part of the leased land for stormwater retention, so it creates some issues. So the ground lease allows us to continue using this parcel for our site plan approval, and the town still retains it, ownership to it. And, you know, the trails will allow the public access to that upland area between the two wetlands.
Okay, thank you. Diane, I think, did you have a question?
No, I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay. Anyone else have questions? All righty. Okay, terrific. Steve Biella, I'll just ask Steve. I know you're online. Did you have any questions? Okay, thank you. I know that's, maybe I should just say yes or no. I know, I know. Just say yes or no. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Poor guy.
I know, I know. Go ahead, Diane.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Section 824 for proposed lot, lot line revision to add a quarter acre portion of 143 Percival Avenue to Percival Field, and for the sale of 143 Percival Avenue of 4.65 acres after the lot line revision, and for the lease of a 4.15 acre portion of Percival Field, as shown on the survey of Angus McDonald, Gary Sharp, and Associates Incorporated from October 4, 2017.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Millard. Further discussion? Then all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. All righty. Onto new business. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Onto new business. All right, good night. The fill permit of the Mattabasset District to fill 18,000 cubic yards over a period of three years. That's 6,000 cubic yards per year at Lot 2, block 75, Route 9. Okay.
Hi. Hello. Good evening, everybody. Art Smontian with Mattabasset District from 45 Main Street in Cromwell. With me is John Dunham, our board chairman, a resident of Berlin as well. We're here tonight. We come every three years to get a fill permit renewed for our ash that we haul over to the Edgewood landfill. Just a quick little history on the landfill. It was actually purchased in 1982. There were some state funds that were involved that granted Mattabasset the landfill for use, strictly used for ash only and any cover material. It's strictly for the Mattabasset District for fill material. So we have a place for our ash, which comes out of the incinerator every year, and we haul approximately about 5,000 to 6,000 cubic yards per year, usually in the summertime, over to the Edgewood landfill. And again, this is for an 18,000 yard, three-year fill permit. There should be a drawing in your package that looks like this, and the area that will be filling in, it's coming from Edgewood Avenue heading kind of south, and then you turn to the west. There's a dash line. It says area filled from previous survey. We're going to be filling back in that same area. There's still quite a bit of capacity there. And if you're interested in as far as the capacity of the land, of the landfill itself, there's some tables at the bottom. They're a little small from my eyes, but it says that we so far filled about 130,000 cubic yards, and the capacity is about 465,000 cubic yards, and based on our average spill rate in the last, I can't see if that's 60, 96, but over the last 10 or 15 years, we have about 92 years left in terms of capacity. So, so we do have plenty of room. There are monitoring wells there as well that we have to test for to meet all state requirements. We do that quarterly as well as annually. And the truck set haul the material come out of our site in Cromwell. They got on Route 9, and they get off in New Britain and go down, I think it's John Downey Drive. I forgot the name of the street before there, maybe where A. H. Harris is down that street there, and then turn into Edgewood to bring the material into the landfill. So it's, there's really no debris or anything that gets out of the trucks. They're all watertight. Everything is drained as far as liquids at the ash, at the lagoons where Mattabasset's located, and they're purely hauling the ash material, but they do have to make sure their trucks aren't, you know, dirty, all the tires. They have a cleaning area, like a tracking pad that's built by the entrance, and also by where the fill goes. They have like an unloading area that they build that worked out very well last year. So we have the same contractor doing the work for the last two years, and he's done the work years in the past as well. So we're pretty happy with his quality of his work. So that's essentially what we're looking for. We'll give you an ASBOLT as well, once we're done. I think that was a condition last year, but we'll certainly be giving, doing an ASBOLT. This project should be done sometime in August or September, and then a couple months to get the ASBOLT done. The, we do have a wetland approval already from 1982 to fill this site up over time, but we'll be developing a kind of like a interim grading plan and some drainage plans that'll probably go to wetlands, just so they could see what we're going to do in the future. So.
Questions from the commission?
Yes, you mentioned the, the wells, I mean, the testing places along the border, and that has been done quarterly and filed, no problem.
Yes, filed with DEP. We have to have it, we have to be certified to be able to do the collections that we run, the tests both in our lab and to an outside lab as well. It's been done since the Ash landfill was installed in the 80s, so, but we need, have to meet, you know, permit numbers for that, and we don't have any issues meeting all our permit requirements.
I'm sorry, are, what's the pattern of the track, the truck traffic?
It comes down Route 9 and gets off, I think it's the old exit 2026, I'm sorry, no, it's the left-hand exit that gets off by the field, the baseball field in New Britain Beehive, then they take a right.
Veterans Drive.
Veterans Drive, and they go down to the right and turn down in New Britain, so.
Okay.
And then, I forgot the name of the street that goes east-west from from, from where Shaylor's is, or.
Yeah.
That cuts down that way. So that goes towards Edgewood Avenue.
Okay, all right.
South Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, what's the flavor of the commission?
Yeah.
If you. I will make a motion to approve the fill permit, subject to staff comments.
Okay, we have the motion by Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Steve. Those opposed, so moved. All right. And just going to pause here, because our other alternate, John Dagan, has arrived to the meeting at 7:28, and I'll ask that you be seated, because we are missing Mr. Hamel and Mr. Rogan tonight. So, all right. Thank you. No problem. All right. So moving on, we're now on to item eight. Yes, you're all set. You too. Bye-bye, guys. All right. So item eight, we have a request of Joe Klopaki for Edgewood Tower Homes LLC for the release of the erosion control bond, 1-30 Edgewood Water Circle, Berlin, which was formerly the Berlin Turnpike numbers of 27, 2718 to 2730 Berlin Turnpike. Okay, so this is, he's looking for the erosion control bond release, and how are we doing with that?
So it can be succinct and tell you that both the soil erosion control bond, as well as the, oh, actually, no, let me do soil erosion bond. Engineering has indicated can be released. The site is fully occupied, and and is, they don't, they have all their.
They've done everything they needed to do.
With regard to soil.
To the soil erosion. Okay. All right. Questions from the commission regarding the soil erosion?
I'll make a motion to release the soil erosion control bond.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, there you go, Mr. Dagan. And the discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Steve. So moved. All right, bless you. The second item is a request of Joe Klopaki, Edgewood Water Townhouses LLC for the release of the Public Improvements Bond, which is 1-30 Edgewood Circle, Berlin, formerly 2718 to 2730 Berlin Turnpike. And how's he doing with that?
So as I stated, he God bless you. completed, and the bond reduction has been shown on your, in the public improvements sheet that you've received, down to the maintenance bond amount at 10% for $12,864 to be held for 12 months as a maintenance bond.
Okay, so we're basically, yeah, so we're basically releasing everything except for that amount?
Except for the retention for maintenance.
Okay. All right.
And I'm not sure that, I, I don't know the date that that would have started at, because it has been completed.
Yeah. That's all right. As long as you guys are satisfied. Okay. All right. Anyone making a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to release the public improvement bond, with the exception of the $12,864 for maintenance.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Millard. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Thank you, Steve. All right. Just want him to make sure that he knows that we're listening for him. Public hearings. So did we have a call for the public hearing that we need to have, right? Oh, yeah, she did. Reading to public hearing.
Oh, Brian's not there.
Brian's not there. Andre, you feel like reading tonight? No, okay. Okay, Ms. Jorsey will read it.
Back to the old days.
Yeah, to the old days. She used to be secretary, so. Okay, well, that's all right. I asked. I just figured, you know.
Right.
Don't want to listen to me.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearing on Thursday, June 15, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Council chambers, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A subdivision application of Kokomo Brothers for a five-lot subdivision at lots 46 and 46D, block 142, 170 Wilkes Pond Road, and 243 Somerset Road. B, proposed plan of conservation and development, 2023 to 2033. Copies of the proposed draft are posted on the town's website and available for public inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk and Planning and Zoning Department. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Remote access to this meeting is available by Zoom video conference, and the link is provided and meeting ID, and this ran December, I'm sorry. I was doing so well. This ran
Good.
the 30th of May, 2023, in Berlin, Connecticut, in the New Britain Herald, legal notices, classified advertising. It was run on June 3 and June 12.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jorsey. All righty. Um, yeah, yeah. I'll just put that back here. Should we just make that for, should we just deal with the Kokomo thing first? Because that's going to, yeah, why don't we just go ahead and do that now, so that we can dig into the other stuff? So he had requested.
Move it up on the agenda?
No, well, yeah. Yes, we do.
So I'll make a motion to move item C to the first item under public hearings.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we have a tie. We'll go with Ms. Daly. All right, thank you. Further discussion, I'm moving the item up. Then all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. So, thank you, Steve.
Motion to continue the subdivision application of Kokomo Brothers for a five-lot subdivision at lots 46 to 46.
And that was by his request. Okay, terrific.
And I just
Yes.
That will then use, let me get to it, 21 of 65 available extension dates to get you to July 6.
Okay.
Wanted to go.
All righty. So we have a mo- So we have a mo- so motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dyken for the discussion. Then all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay. So let's go back to the regular business. Proposed plan of conservation development, twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-three. I know I won't be around then. Okay. Copies of the proposal draft are posted on the town's website and available for public inspection at the town, at the office of the town clerk and the planning and zoning department. All right, this is, go ahead.
Add to that.
Yeah.
The crowd in the room.
That I am going to be back at third, twenty thirty-three. Wheel me in, baby.
There are prints of it in case anyone.
Yes.
Or if any of you want a print, I do have some.
Okay.
If you don't have them of the draft that was actually printed on five eleven.
Wish we have.
Print the draft from three thirty-one. This is the print from five eleven.
Okay. All right, well, I'll stick with my old trusted one. Thank you.
In the room, you have Ken.
Yes, Ken, hi. Okay, okay. That's all right.
And Francisco Gomes, the consultants are.
All right, two. Okay, who wants to wow first? Ken, are you going to be the wower tonight? Or are you going to let Francisco wallow away over there in Zoom land?
Ken will give a brief introduction to F H I, our role in the project, and then I'll get into the specifics. Just walking people through the process we went through. For those of you in attendance that might not have been familiar with the P O C D update process.
Okay. All right, terrific. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, to everyone, thank you. So F H I Studio, we are a firm based in Hartford, Connecticut.
Better take one too.
Go in ourselves. I have been working with the town, you and others over the last about two years. Excited that we've come to this point and.
You're excited. We're really excited.
I think we're very excited. We've sort of followed the schedule and things have gone very well. We've enjoyed working with you and it's been a great process. So we are at this point where we are looking for adoption of the.
Planet Conservation.
Development.
Yeah, all right.
And over the course of this time, we've met with, with you, we've met with the public, met with key stakeholders, done existing conditions, condition reviews and come up with a lot of visions and ideas and looking forward for the next ten years while you'll be around to see it all implemented and all the excitement of.
Yeah, I can't wait. Well, if you had asked me ten years ago, I didn't think I was going to be here either, so I shouldn't probably.
With that, I think Francisco will get into more of the specific details for our crowd that we have here.
Okay. I'm going to move this up. I keep standing to this chair, so I'm going to move it around. Okay. Go ahead.
All right, as Ken mentioned, it's been close to two years now. There's a lot of work that's brought us to this moment. And I'd like to, for the benefit of everyone attending and viewing, I'd like to walk through the P O C D update process, talk a little bit about the purpose and the role of the P O C D. And how it is that we came to develop the plan that is in front of you this evening. But first of all, the purpose of the P O C D, which stands for Planet Conservation Development. It is a policy document and it guides the town and its governance and decision-making. Along the lines of a matter of issues. Land use most obviously, but also issues related to housing. Economic development. Town facilities and infrastructure. And your cultural resources, and that includes historic properties, districts, farms. And other resources that really make the town what it is and give it, gives it its sense of place and identity. In addition to that, the planet conservation and development guides other items and issues related to the growth and stewardship of resources across the town. That's the role of this document. The process we went through to arrive at this plan. As Ken mentioned, it's been close to two years. And we've engaged a wide range of people, boards and commissions in this process. We, we first started with an online survey that we had participation from over a couple hundred people in that survey. We had very good feedback. We conducted a public workshop last year in June, focus group meetings as well last year in June. We had the plan reviewed by both town council and it's been endorsed by town council. And reviewed by CROG. And Maureen, I don't know if you made mention of the letter that we received from CROG. But if you have not, now would probably be a good opportunity.
Not yet, but that is included yesterday. We received the letter. I guess today we receive the letter redated. Today, the, with the regional plan, the CROG finding no apparent conflict with the regional plan and policies, and then they go on to make some other comments with regard to the the connections and the aligning with the state P O C D that. Yeah, it's been distributed. If you want me to read it out loud, I will. But it seems to be a glowing endorsement.
No.
And so a review of the plan by the CROG, and in this case, Capitol Region Council Governments is required. And they, they review the plan for consistency with the regional plan and for the state plan as well. And they found Berlin's plan to be consistent with both. And they endorsed the plan without any reservations, without any requested amendments or changes. And so that, that was a letter that we just received and it was very good to have that endorsement coming in to this hearing. And, and so all of this work engagement through a close to two years with monthly meetings with our P O C D committee to review existing conditions, review and discuss input received from the public. And to develop the plan's recommendations and ultimately to compose and, and format and produce the document. Those meetings, we've had about twenty of those. And so we've met on a regular basis for a while now. And that has brought us to the plan that is before you now. As I mentioned, community engagement was what I described as a full court cross, right? We, we made every effort to engage and invite the community, participate in this process. It's, it's always a challenge getting people's attention, particularly with a long-range plan. And we made every opportunity available. And that, as I mentioned, included an online survey, workshop. Four thematic meetings. And what that means is we did meetings on topics such as transportation and infrastructure. Cultural resources and environmental resources, economic development, housing. And we had in-depth discussions on items related to those topics. All planning and zoning committee meetings were open to the public. They were in-person and virtual. We've posted all planned material, including presentations and various documents and reports online and maintain that available to the public. And the draft P O C D was posted for public review for over a month now in hard copy in the town clerk's office and both online. We received a lot of feedback from the community and the engagement process. And I, I think this is one of the more important questions that we ask the community and it really gives us a strong sense as to how receptive the community is to change. And what we found in Berlin is that your residents acknowledge the fact that you need to grow and change, but they're incrementalists. And, and that's a healthy thing, right? They're cautious about change. They want to make sure as they, as you grow and change as a community, it's positive, it contributes to your identity. It adds strength to your community. And it, and what most importantly, what people express to us is you don't want change to result in loss of your identity. As a rural suburban community with an urban past with functioning farms and a very close-knit community. And that doesn't want to be lost. And that was clearly conveyed to us. And, and I believe that the plan really makes recommendations that embraces that concept of maintaining your identity. And so this input was incredibly informative. And it really shaped the recommendations that we made in the plan. The plan, in addition to being directed by community input, it was also data-driven. And we did a tremendous amount of research into not only existing conditions and demographics and statistics that are relevant to Berlin today. But we also look back ten, twenty, thirty years to understand the trends and how your community has changed over time. So we pulled from a number of sources and databases, including U S Census and state-level data. And there's the whole list right there. And, and what we see is you are changing. And much like people's opinion about change, that should be incremental. The change in Berlin over time has been incremental. And I think what's most important is that unlike a lot of communities in Connecticut, you have grown consistently over the past fifty or so years. That's plateaued a little bit in the last ten. But the growth has been, has been consistent. Other things are changing. Your school enrollment is flat, if not slightly declining, but as a community you're growing. So it's critically important to plan for growth and change in your community. Because that growth has been happening decade after decade. The plan itself is divided into six major topic areas, and those comprise sections or chapters of the plan. And for each one of those topic areas, we identified a goal, a specific goal related to each. And there they are, all are right there. I'm not going to read them all word for word. But for environmental resources, really the focus is protecting those environmental resources and expanding protection of open space. For housing, it's increasing the diversity and supply of housing in the town for various people, at various levels of income at various stages in life. For economic development, it's about expanding, diversifying your tax base and providing employment opportunities for your residents. For transportation, about adequately maintaining infrastructure, investing and increasing transportation options. For facilities and services, it's having high-quality facilities. High-quality services to residents and that, those are both sustainable, meaning you, year after year, you can afford to maintain, sustain those services, and they're done in a sustainable way. And finally, cultural resources that you protect and promote those resources, whether it be your museums, historic properties or farms. So as I mentioned, with environmental resources, we, in addition to that broad goal, we've identified a number of specific strategies. And we go into even more detail, specific actions that are necessary, that are part of those strategies that are necessary to achieve the goal. So there are kind of three tiers of, of guidance within the plan. There's the goal, those six broad goals. And then we've identified strategies, and that's how you achieve the goal. And then within those strategies, those are comprised of action items. Those are the specific actions that we've identified at this point in the process that are, that are necessary to take action on as part of a strategy working towards those goals. And this is an evolving process. This plan is a snapshot. It's a moment in time. It's intended to be something you can build upon over the, every year over the next ten years. And it should continue to evolve and change with your, with your changing needs in the community. So you may identify additional actions that are necessary to take. So as I mentioned, for each one of these topic areas, we've identified a number of strategies. There, there's several of them listed right there for environmental resources. For housing, one of the important strategies for housing is to meet and exceed a supply of ten percent of qualified affordable housing, qualified with respect to the state's definition of affordable housing. And that puts Berlin in a position, not only provide housing to people who need it, who can't afford housing that is not affordable, but also gives you full control of the development that happens. And finally, with respect to housing, you also have tremendous opportunities in front of you in Kensington Village and in your T O D district in the area around the station to develop housing in relation to transit. And there are tremendous synergies there. There are some successes that are current, that have already have been experienced in that area and that are currently unfolding. So we touch upon that in the plan. And the plan, I should note, also builds upon and makes references to your affordable housing plan that we worked with the town to develop and was adopted about a year ago. Economic development, it, as I mentioned before, there are lots of opportunities all across the town. The town's been incredibly progressive in this area. It has identified targeted economic development sites with a range and a diversity of economic development, everything from mom-and-pop shops and restaurants to industrial, large commercial office and mixed uses, as in this example from Kensington Center. So the, the town is very forward-thinking with respect to economic development. We identify all the areas that should continue to be and should be in areas of focus for the town. And the P O C D provides a nice framework for economic development going forward. With respect to transportation. We, you know, we point to all of the needs. The town's done a very good job of maintaining its infrastructure, but every year it's, it's a continuing challenge. And we've made a lot of recommendations specific to expanding mobility for different types of users such as pedestrians. Doing a better job of connecting destinations in town with sidewalks for pedestrians and for bicyclists in addition to emerging forms of mobility, right? Micro mobility, which are scooters and other forms of mobility that can connect your train station to locations. And building on your, your existing transit services and doing a better job of connecting to those. And we provide recommendations for all of that within the plan. Facilities and services. Your, your community is blessed with incredible services and great facilities, but those require continuous maintenance and investment. And we point to the, the outstanding, some of the outstanding needs and most pressing needs. One of those being a support of your volunteer firehouses. In addition to that, your infrastructure are part of the town facilities and particularly your sewer and water infrastructure. And there are some tremendous needs with respect to sewer and water infrastructure that we identify within the plan and provide recommendations for how to address. And cultural resources. Worthington Meeting House is an incredible asset. It is in need of, of work and investment. And there have been ongoing efforts for several years now to repurpose this structure and fully restore it. And this is one of many examples of treasures that you have in your community that need to be protected and invested in that are really critical to the identity of Berlin. And so I think we've done a very good job of documenting that within the plan and providing recommendations that you can move forward with. Finally, the plan culminates with a future land use plan. This is a required element of any plan of conservation and development. And it's the intention of this plan, as expressed in a map, to guide zoning and land use. to guide zoning and land use. So unlike a zoning map, this plan and this map doesn't tell you what you can pull a building permit for, or, or, you know, where you can build, uh, commercial or, or, uh, or a residence. Uh, it's more about thinking towards the future and how policy should be set regarding use of land. So when, uh, zoning amendments are considered, this plan should be referenced as a guide in making decisions whether or not to rezone a residential area to mixed use. Or whether or not to, um, uh, upzone something to an increased density. And I think what, what you'll see in, in the map for you is that uh, this plan really tries to protect much of what is currently low density residential farm, forest, agriculture and open space by uh, really identifying the value and the importance of maintaining much of that area as parks or protected open space, rural residential or agriculture. And that's all the green. And in addition to that, we identify the areas where commercial development really, uh, should be focused and is encouraged. And that's because those are the areas where you have the infrastructure to support it. And where it's least environmentally impactful. And those are the areas shown in purple and red and agenda. So, uh, as I mentioned, this map is a guide and it's a reference for the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a reference for Town Council when making big decisions about zoning and land use across the community. And it's a plan that can be updated. It could be up, it will be updated ten years from now. And it can be updated in the interim too, if, if conditions change in the community. Now, I, I talked a little bit about this already in, in terms of how the plan's recommendations are organized. And, and what I, what I had not yet mentioned is that there is a single vision statement that unites the entire plan. And we came up, we worked with the committee to come up with that vision statement very early in the process. And the plan's vision statement really describes what it is that is important to the community. It describes your identity. And really where you want to go as a community. And, and it's, it's, it's front and center in the plan. And that vision statement, we, we really used to measure all of the plan's recommendations, everything that was considered, everything that went into the plan. Is it consistent with the vision statement and is it supportive of that vision statement? So the six goals I talked about earlier all tie into and support that vision statement. The strategies are, are all worked towards the goals, which supports the vision statement all the way down to the actions. And, uh, in terms this of where the rubber meets the road, uh, we, the plan is concluded with an implementation, uh, plan or section. And that is where we summarize everything that needs to be done, right? This is the ten or so pages that, that most department heads would print out and into a board. Uh, it's their guide for taking action and getting things done. And it summarizes everything that was discussed in the plan, puts it all in one place in their user friendly format. It identifies the responsible parties, the lead entity, who needs to champion that action, that who needs to take on that strategy and own it. And who they need support from. So the partner entity. We also identify the priority level. Um, is it a high priority, something that needs to get started on right away? Medium, low, and that guides that sense of urgency about those actions and strategies. And finally, through the course of developing the plan, there were a number of themes that emerged. That the, just, when I say themes, these are just ideas or topics that came up again and again and again. We saw in our language and our discussions and comments from the community. And, and it really boiled down to four of them. So if you were to take this whole plan, you would say, well, what are, what are the big ideas? In four, four ideas, give me four big ideas of this plan. And they are grow the economic base, expand housing choice, protect environmental and cultural resources and invest in facilities and infrastructure. And those can be seen on the left side of the table, uh, in colored text. And so what we've done here in this table is we've identified each of the strategies and actions that ties in directly with one of those themes. And so, some of the plan's recommendations, uh, connect with multiple themes. In which case it really helps you understand how important taking action on that particular strategy or action is. Because it's working towards multiple different, uh, items that are really important to the community. And that have been identified as important by this plan. So our next steps. Well, um, you as a commission need to adopt the plan. The, the plan of conservation development is a document that is, uh, adopted by the Planning, Zoning Commission. They, they are responsible for preparing the update and, and ultimately they, they are the stewards of this document and of this process. Uh, so that's what is directly in front of us is adoption of the plan. Uh, once the plan is adopted, we will file it with the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management. Uh, and then it becomes, uh, you know, it goes on state record, becomes official. And that really starts our clock ticking, uh, for until the next ten years, until your next plan. What, what we've also recommended within the plan is that you as a community consider the formation of a P O C D implementation committee. And, and this is something that's pretty common and it is, that committee is typically made up of, uh, members of Planning, Zoning Commission. But also members from other boards, commissions, committees and council. And it's really important that there's a diversity of people that are represented, uh, on that committee because you really need this plan uh, to be embraced and, and it needs to be engaged by a lot of different bodies across the town for, for this to successfully move you forward um, towards the plan's goals and recommendations. So that's one of the recommend, recommendations we make. It doesn't have to happen right away, uh, but it, it would be incredibly, uh, instrumental in supporting, uh, the implementation of this plan. So with that said, uh, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to turn it back to, uh, Maureen. And Joan.
All right, thanks. So here we are. Hi, hi again. Um, do we have any, uh, questions from the, yes, Tim?
Yes, I do. Uh, I've been making a statement, uh, I guess many meetings now. Uh, the facilities of the firehouses, uh, information is totally wrong. Uh, wow, page, uh, so page number one or six oh, section six one zero. Okay.
I'm sorry, let me just get to where you are so I can. You're in six point zero. And your page at the bottom, right hand corner down at the bottom. Oh, do the one in front of you.
Uh, seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Okay, let me flip one more time. Flip. Okay. So what are you referring to as far as?
Okay, the, the fire stations are not numbered correctly here. Square footage is not correct. Uh, years built is not correct. Uh, uh, site, a couple in the site i- is correct. Uh, some is not like, uh, Kensington is, uh, probably six acres. Uh, it's got a four point two, whatever. Uh, but the years of, uh, time is, it's saying East Berlin was number fir, number one station in the, in the town. Year, uh, year incorporated was nineteen thirty-two. Okay.
Oh, okay. So, uh, all right, before, before you continue to, Maureen, was the, was this information something that was dragged in from the old one? Let me say, I think I have the old one.
Yeah, I, I, I supplied some of this information. And, uh, it either got dragged in from the old one or something, uh,
Yeah.
If I could speak, this information came directly from the assessor's data. And we, we did have some conversations about this a couple of months ago, but we have yet to have anyone provide us with anything.
I, I, I worked it up and sent it to the planner. Uh, uh, and, uh, to that, the, uh, like I said, the number one half fire station in Brooklyn and, and Berlin is East Berlin Fire Department nineteen thirty-two. Uh, number two fire department was Kensington, uh, nineteen fifty-two. Okay, they built a new firehouse in nineteen, uh, took out building permits in nineteen sixty-eight for new firehouse. Uh, but it was, uh, it's nineteen fifty-two. Uh, the, uh, Berlin Firehouse is not nineteen forty-six. I know that. Uh, and Berlin is number three in South Kensington. Uh, it's not nineteen seventy building. It's old school that was out there. Uh, and it was built a long time before that, converted into a firehouse in nineteen seventy. Uh, I'm just, just looking through this information. If I think you would would like to get your information now from the assessors office from the, the fire marshal or, or, or the, uh, uh, I don't know what you call now fires.
Fire, the marshal.
No, 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 the, uh,
Fire marshal.
Chief. Well, well, what he, uh, he's a Jim Simons.
I, I thought, I,
No, he does, uh,
We had checked and gotten numbers from him and updated. So I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's been imported from the old one.
Followed up properly and, um,
I just want to correct it before we go to final.
Yeah, and the old plan, it doesn't really address the fire districts. I have the one that's.
Well, no, no, the, the original drafts they were doing, I think it's been imported from there. It was changed once. Uh, at least I supplied the information to Maureen, uh, back when.
All right. So you're asking that we?
Just the information on the fire departments become.
Section six, that would be page seventy-six.
You know, because, uh, fire department, voluntary fire departments are very strictly, I'm number one, I'm number two, whatever. Uh, so if we want to do, uh, uh,
You mean they'll, they'll have a, a you know, in other words, they'll be upset?
Yeah, they'll be upset. Uh, if the numbers aren't right and something produced by the town.
We would, we would not want the information to be inaccurate and sorry for that oversight. Um, and we also end up using the document as a resource for accurate information in the future. I would go back to the old, old reports as well. So of course we want accurate and
Yeah.
especially historic information.
Okay.
Certainly those numbers can be verified.
That was job through the whole thing.
Say even, um, well, it would be at the pleasure of the commission, of course, but should you decide to vote on it tonight, that could be a condition of approval that we get those.
Okay.
You know, uh, you would be able to do that. If that's an edit it, you wanted to prove with the following edits.
Yeah.
Add it.
Okay. And I think Andrea had a question.
Um, and I, I apologize, was not part of the group that participated into this pro, um, this document. But on, on page seventy-five, should we be indicating that the town hall, this town hall was probably built in seventy-five? The original town hall was on winning to Ridge. Is it, is it the means to have, is this historical? I guess that's my question. Because the town hall, we've always had a town hall here and it was on Worthington Ridge at one point. This one was probably built in seventy-five and that would stand true for the Peck Memorial Library. That was on um, Farmington Avenue over by St. Paul's. The original. So I didn't know if this is historical.
It depends. Some of the information that is in there talks about history that moves forward. And others doesn't, it's not meant to be a history book. Okay. You know, that's not where.
Yeah.
To for historic information. Okay.
Yeah, if I could, if I could speak to that elaborate on that, um, we, we actually do provide some, is, uh, a little bit of, uh, narrative regarding, uh, where town hall originally was and the role of Worthington Meeting House, et cetera. And that, that's in the cultural resources section. This section is facility section. So it's really about uh, the building and the facility. And, and it's really intended to focus on the facilities so you can plan for these facilities, the type of investment and maintenance that might be required in, in the facilities. So for our purposes here, we're documenting the buildings and, and the building that you're in at this moment. And it's really about that facility and not necessarily about, um, the establishment of the town hall and, and its historic roots.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any ones from the commission or from the public? Yes, June.
Uh, just minor detail is, um, since you've been gone for two years, we've had an update maybe with a commissioner uh, alternate to John Dyken.
Oh, yeah, of course we would update the, the, um, those first pages for all current members as well as referencing, for instance, that standing on this, she's not a commission member still any longer. She's remained on the committee.
Yeah.
Would be on the credits page. You will, we'll make sure of that.
Yeah. Well, make sure that we, we will make sure that the people who participated, um, you know, through the two-year process will be so noted because I know that different sections were taken over and shared, uh, by different people. So, all right, terrific. Um, is there anyone in the public? Yes. Would I just ask that you come to, yes, use the microphones, state your name and address for the record? And we'll be happy to take your feedback. You might have to move the microphone. Yeah, just so that we make sure that we get it. And okay. I don't know, maybe.
Hello, hello?
Yeah, better because.
I'm Mary Catherine LaRose from twenty-six Woodruff Lane in Kensington. And I did attend, um, few, two or three of your public meetings, um, and found them very interesting. Um, and you know, when it comes to getting the public involved, it's like you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink. But since I was, you know, interested and wanted to go and I'm here tonight, there was just three areas that, um, I am most concerned about in town, um, having been here since nineteen seventy-six. When I moved to town. Excuse me, I'm.
That's okay, allergies. Allergies.
Yeah.
I know.
Anyway.
We're also, um, go ahead.
Uh, so in, in the document, it, it talks about sidewalks and, and increasing sidewalks, improving sidewalks. And, um, and the areas that they want to concentrate on. And of course, anything that leads down into Kensington Village, they want to add some, you know, uh, and, and, um, and certain areas where you might be accessing a public building or something. But for me, living in the older part of town in, in Kensington, um, they mentioned one part of Percival Avenue that they want to put sidewalks, but they don't mention the fact that Percival Avenue, I know it's a state road and I know it's going to be difficult. But it's a very, uh, well-traveled, um, people drive very quickly and it's all older homes, um, and families and older people. And we really need sidewalks that a person can walk a baby carriage or walk with a toddler. Um, or that I can walk on and not feel like at any point in time I'm going to get run over. So I'm really concerned about sidewalks in areas like that, in the older streets, Robins Road. Um, you know, and Percival Avenue, because that's my area. So that's what I'm speaking to. The other area that I am concerned about in town is our water system. Um, and hearing more and more about the problems with our water system and the fact that we have three water districts and how inefficient that is and how they don't play well together possibly. And the aging of the system. So that's a concern that I definitely have that has been addressed in the plan of conservation and development, but really the town needs to move that to a really high priority, I believe. And the third area that I personally care about, um, is preserving our historic buildings and we've And the third area that I personally care about is preserving our historic buildings, and we've talked and talked about it, and it's in the Plan of Conservation and Development as being. A priority, however, these buildings are still just languishing. The old, I guess it's now the Kensington Garden Center Building or the old Art League Building. Of, of course, the, the old Town Meeting House on, on Worthington Ridge and others. That are just languishing, and you know, when the roofs cave in, then they say, well, now we can't save it, so those are three areas that. I just wanted to speak to, and also I wanted to say how amazing. The document is and the work that went into it, and I think that the company. That is, has done the work, has done an amazing job, so I wanted to thank them and the committee that worked on it. Back and forth, it's an amazing document, had nothing to do with ten years ago, so this is all kind of new to me, so thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else? Okay. Right. Is there anyone online who wishes to comment regarding the document, Plan of Conservation and Development? All right, hearing nothing, or no one? All right, I, I think it was a, I, I think it was a great document, I think you guys did a fantastic job in trying to address all the issues that we had as the commission, as the committee. I think it does well to help protect the character of the town. And the preservation of the open spaces while having a control over the growth, and I think that's very important. For us to maintain is the control of how quickly. And what direction we grow, because we all know that what's today's, you know, hot ticket item. Is not necessarily what's going to be a couple of years down the road, so we're, we're being very thoughtful, I think. About where we want to see the development and how we want it to progress and how it's going to co-mingle with our existing community. So with that, I, you know, I thank, I thank Tim for, you know, bringing it to light. And Andrea for her questions as well, does anyone else have any feedback about the document? And Mary Catherine as well. All right. Yes, one comment, go ahead.
And this, this is not the first Plan of Conservation and Development that I've. Participated in at least. Observing the process to some degree, but it is the first time that I participated in the committee. To develop the document and it, I found to be a very rewarding experience. And I think that. It's. Exceptional in many ways because of the work that Francisco and your team have done. You brought a lot of expertise with your group to the town. And did a lot of research, there's a lot of fact-finding behind. This document that I'm not a hundred percent sure we had in the past, and I, I think that the document really is more comprehensive than. I feel it has been at other times.
And I don't want to forget to thank Jim Mahoney too.
Yeah.
Who sat through all these meetings with us and Maureen and the crew, so thank you to everyone, anyone else?
If we're doing shout-outs, I think we should mention that New England G O does something.
New England G O did, and Dylan did some.
We have it all listed.
Yeah.
As we discussed. At that page, but.
Yeah, I think we all deserve a, a little round of applause for ourselves or a glass of champagne seeing this to the finish line, absolutely, absolutely, take a bow. Anyway, so with that, so we're here to, yes.
Would just wonder if. Based on the comments, and I don't want to put him on the hot seat, but if Jim or Francisco has any response to the questions or comments that were made.
Yeah, Jim or Francisco, do you have any questions or comments regarding?
Specifically with regard to the sidewalks, but any of them.
About the sidewalk?
Or elaborating based on the comments made and everybody disappeared, oh, you're back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start, or, okay, I'll start and then I'll hand it over to Jim. Appreciate, I definitely appreciate the comments from the member of the public regarding the sidewalks, we do place an emphasis on the importance of connecting. Areas such as Percival Avenue with sidewalks for, for safety and convenience. And, and there's, that's one of the things that CROG had acknowledged about our plan was our planning for. Bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and the plans that were included for trail connectivity as well. For recreational riders. And so I appreciate that comment. On with respect to Tim's comments. As Maureen mentioned, you could, you could basically vote to adopt the plan with revisions made to update. Or revise the dates of the firehouses as needed for accuracy. Like I said, our information is best based upon assessor's data, if we can get more accurate information, we're certainly plug it in. And that's really just a matter of changing a few numbers in the table, so we're, we're happy to do that, I don't think it changes anything. At all about really the recommendations of this plan, because the plan ultimately recommends that the town. Be more engaged in supporting your volunteer firehouses, and that, that's really. I think the most important thing to call attention to, and that, that remains unchanged. So with, with that said, I'll turn it over to Jim for any comments that he might have.
Just a few quick things, the. Regarding the sidewalks, certainly appreciate Mary Catherine's comments on sidewalks, water systems and historic buildings of the sidewalks. Were kind of radiating out from the center, we have existing sidewalk network, we have. We're trying, the first thing we're doing is, is. Call them the missing links, we got a lot of missing links and then we're starting to extend from there. A, a lot of the places we're extending are really strategic in terms of where other sidewalks already exist. In subdivisions, we're moving in your direction, Mary Catherine, might take us a while, we do have a new. Sidewalk grant application was authorized by the council, will be submitting in July, that will include a. Couple of minor segments, one on Percival Avenue and Robins Road, so. Try, move it in your direction, realistically, it's going to take a while to get there, but. Even this project, which is, I, I don't know, the, the cost of sidewalk, sidewalks have skyrocketed. We have, you know, our project that we're proposing now is going to be an eight hundred thousand dollar project. And it wouldn't, it doesn't get us nearly as far as we would like, but we'll keep on chipping away at it. The water systems, we have strong recommendations that regarding, including. Consolidation of the three water districts and the council has tried, is in the process of trying to initiate a study of that topic. And, and my thoughts on historic buildings, I think. It, it comes back to, I think, some of the things Francisco said about implementation, I mean, we've got a lot of good recommendations in there. But people have to embrace them, the commissions, the, the town staff, the citizenry. You know, working together to embrace them, we can do more, I think, in the historic area, I think that was an area of emphasis in this plan. But it's a challenge because there's limited funding and we did, for example, apply for a, a grant to renovate. Led school this year, we did not get it, but we're working on it, so. But it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of effort, no doubt, and so hopefully that will be an area that people will focus on in the future.
Hey, thank you.
Um, I kind of want to wrap, not wrap up. You guys, but the, the comments from the staff with, just a reminder that. On the Plan of Conservation and Development certainly lays out the plan for the town and decisions, and you know, we look to it. And refer to it in our reports to you with regard to making the planning decisions, development and whatnot. Stories and everything else, but it is also, and, and some of the references in it. Because they're used, it's also looked at by the state when the town's applying for grants. To see that those grants that we're applying for. With our goals, so some of the. The. Factors were thought about hard by the committee to as goals that may also require funding.
Yeah.
And we look to it.
Well, that's good.
Keep some of those words in if possible, so that.
Definitely.
It's, it's clear that that's a vision of the town.
Yeah, definitely, and, and just one last thing, because I think June brought it to light with the acknowledgements, I want to make sure that we have George Millard, because he handled that whole. Affordable housing portion for that, and that was huge, and he did an excellent job. So I'd like to acknowledge him, he and also Sandy Coppola, who was on this commission and continued to participate. And I want to make sure that she is also given a recognition as part of the committee. All right.
Just a housekeeping, housekeeping question for Maureen, should we just formally enter the CROG letter into the record of the public hearing?
I probably, I think it definitely should be added. That would be great.
That's the comment? Yes. Do we have to read it into? Yeah, you want to read? You feel like reading, or I'll ask Andrea? No, you won't, you don't have to give any dates. Yeah.
Okay, so June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. Report on P O C D referral, P O C D twenty twenty-three. Dash three, comprehensive update to the Berlin Plan of Conservation and Development for twenty twenty-three. Commissioners receipt is acknowledged of the above-mentioned referral. Notice of this proposal was transmitted to the Policy and Planning Division of the Capital Region Council of Governments under the provisions of section eight dash twenty-three H four. Of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended. Comment, the staff of the Regional Planning Commission of the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed this zoning referral and finds no apparent conflict. With regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. CROG staff recommend or commends the town of Berlin for aligning closely with the regional plan of conservation and development. On improving connections of existing green space and trails, as well as improving connections for pedestrians and bicyclists. This impressive theme of connections is continued in the town of Berlin's efforts in expanding transit operations. And options to improve mobility, accessibility for all ages and incomes. Furthermore, CROG shows support for the town of Berlin's willingness to explore mixed-use options. For more holistic and resilient living options for residents, as well as support for the town's consideration of revising zoning regulations. To allow for a greater diversity of housing options for all ages and incomes. CROG also appreciates the town's consideration for low-impact development, as well as the other preservation and conservation methods outlined throughout the town's plan. The public hearing date has been scheduled for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with our procedures, this letter will constitute final CROG action on this referral. Questions concerning this referral should be directed to Jacob Knowlton. Distribution to the planner of Newington, Rocky Hill, Southington, New Britain, Cromwell, Middletown, Meriden. River Cog, South Central Cog. Respectfully submitted Jennifer Bardis, early chairman, Regional Planning Commission. William Rice, vice chairman, Regional Planning Commission, and Jacob Knowlton, community development planner.
Excellent, well done. Well done indeed, okay, so do we have a, a motion?
Yeah.
We have, yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dyken, for the discussion on this, and all those in favor, I suppose so moved. And I just lost my agenda. Somewhere in the process. Where did it go? Hang on, I'm, okay, I could steal his. No, I can steal Brian's, he doesn't mind, okay, I just have to find my spot in time, thank you. All right, so the next item on the public hearing is going to be the proposed amendment and plan of planning and zoning staff to the Berlin zoning regulations for section eleven D D. Planned residential infill development, these are ongoing public hearings, so. Here we go, we did receive the proposed text. I don't know how it went off. Okay.
One. There you go.
Oh, oh, boy.
Thank you.
It's very bright. Okay, all right. I don't know if he left or not.
Actually, no.
Well, he kind of makes me giggle because he shows up. And then I don't know if he left or not.
Yeah, it damaged a little.
Okay, so we got these, got these.
Wait, now it went off again.
All right.
This one. Oh, that's a little, is that a little better?
Better than it was. You know, it was too bright.
Okay. All right, so we have a text amendment proposal that we received with some revisions in here. And have we all had a chance to look through it?
Want to make sure that the record that everyone has.
Okay.
Or has reviewed the record all the way through, because this is a lot of public hearings.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that anyone who. Who. Seated for a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, reviewed the entire record as well as. We had. Through the process. And I'll just do an update.
Yeah.
I don't think we've done it at any of those most recent meetings. There were a couple of meetings that Commissioner Bailey missed, one in February and one in May. One that Mr. Hamon missed. Commissioner Biella, yes, the end of April and the one in May, the one of May, and. Commissioner Bacon missed the first several until he was put on.
No action on the night that I missed.
Oh, right, there was none.
And the nights I were gone, I did watch the videos of the. Mission meeting.
And you were here, Ms. Millard, right? Okay. Yeah, otherwise we can't vote on it. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the night, so the listed nights are the nights that.
Okay.
Was a quick statement that night, day you missed, there was a quick statement about it that you tried to update and where it was, but there was no new content.
Yes.
That night or discussion.
Okay, all right, so looking through the document, does anyone have any questions? Yeah, okay. Ms. Miller.
Sorry. Whether. Commissioner Dyken reviewed the record, or will you not?
I, I did not, it was several meetings before, I may have watched one or one of those meetings, I definitely didn't watch all of them. So I will recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you for that.
We have a lot of procedural things going on around here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we have to be careful. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, just reading this over and I just got a couple of comments.
Yeah, but I.
Okay. Anywhere you want.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. On page two. Under three C. It was changed. One, one and a half stories. Nor eighteen feet in height.
Shall exceed, no, no building shall exceed.
One and a half stories.
This. You want, or.
No, no.
Or nor.
Or is fine.
I like. Nor to me is a little more clear, of course, that was me writing it.
This is just little picky stuff, is, is that eighteen, that eighteen feet, is that from the floor to the roof, is that from the foundation to the roof?
So it's from the average grade on each side, so according to our regulation, height is measured. In most instances, there's a couple of regulations where it's different, so. For our general regulation definition of height, you measure from the average finished grade on each side of the building. Each side has to meet the height requirement to, for a pitched roof halfway between the side.
to, for a pitched roof halfway between the socket and the ridge. If you have pitch, it's halfway up.
All right.
And that is the, the way height is measured across the pretty much across the board in all residential, that's Lee Farms. That, that zone has a little bit different definition because of the sloping lands. There was an amendment that really clarified that to the building and how much percent of the basement is exposed and it's, that's a complex.
Okay.
More complex than general terminology.
I just want to specify that a little bit. If it's eighteen feet, it basically could be a cape type house because uh, eight-foot ceilings is sixty, but with the wood, with the wood in between it. Uh, so you could, could actually have a cape halfway up that peak.
That's, that's where, and I don't know if you remember during that testimony when I was explaining that modification. I was, um, my intent was to allow for that cape style.
Yeah.
You get those steeper pitched roofs, they.
Right.
A little bit, in my opinion, a little more architecture.
Is that what that, you know, that's with no dormer though, like a cape with no dormer.
Um, it would depend on the dormer. So, yeah, it, um, but probably, um, what we more typically refer to as partial dormers, doghouse dormers, that kind of thing.
Like I have a cape.
Once you get to a full dormer, then your height is going out and your story is going.
So I have a cape.
Depends on how much of it, it's kind of a building.
So it's like a gable dormer, where it's just like in the front here and front here.
Yeah, maybe even up to that. Maybe even as wide as, you know, something that would be half the width of the house.
So, one and a half stories, would that be livable? Would that be, that be a room?
They have the headroom within a certain um, amount of square footage is allowed. Yeah, they have, and I don't know what that height is, I think it's eight. It has to have eight-foot headroom.
So they could have a rest.
A portion of it.
Bathroom up there, a bedroom.
They could.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification.
It was styled that way.
If it's, if it is growing out, that is square footage of, of living space at dormer. So that, you know, if it's a thousand foot, you know, every time you're dormer out, you're grabbing a little bit more square footage out from down below. You know, so.
And, and the distance from where the eight foot is to where the pitch comes all the way down or meets the knee wall. You, you know, typically that's where outside group and the people I know put their dressers, you know, you put the thing that don't need headroom.
Yeah.
Against the wall.
That was my old bedroom.
Or whatever. Um, again, there was considerable conversation back and forth and that was one of the things that was edited back and forth and is that the pleasure of the commission to decide where they want to land with it, but it was my understanding in the last draft that that's where we landed.
Okay. Um, an item D, no dwelling unit shall took out be less than five hundred square feet. Don't exceed a thousand square feet, what does that mean? My, my concern there is that we drove by these little houses over in, in Meriden on that, um, Carabeta built. And they're like tiny, tiny little things, they're, they're so they're only like four hundred and eighty feet, square feet and where, where my concern is, is what happens if we get someone who puts something under five hundred square feet?
I want to make sure I get this right and I do know that our consultant's still on, or I see that he is anyway, but, um, and I, because I don't have the document in front of me. But I believe that that we, we discuss at the committee, the P O C D committee meetings for sure. And I think the zoning meeting that the statute has us take the square footage out, minimum square footage. We're not allowed to have it in our regulations, so the proposals are to eliminate language that we're not allowed to have, which is minimum square footage.
No one could come in and build anything less than a thousand square feet. That's what we're saying.
It can be bigger than a thousand.
It can't be bigger, but how small can they go?
As the statute is telling us, they can go as small as they want. Or as small as building code allows, I think building code still has a, a, a limit of some livable space in order to make it livable. And that's something I'm going to say, that's really small, like two hundred. Francisco's nodding, so.
It's, uh, it's actually smaller than that, Maureen.
But that's a bathroom.
But, but I'd like to remind everyone that really market conditions will prevail. I, you just won't be able to rent or sell something that's under a certain size. But the state does through Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine does prohibit us through zoning from restricting units, uh, to a certain size or, or to a minimum, certain minimum. But we just can't do that, don't have that authority anymore.
All right.
Well, we'll, we'll, uh, determine about, of the square footage of a house, this is six units per acre and I go do uh, six four hundred square foot units that they can't sell for a bunch of money at all, you know what I mean? So they go build something that's substantial enough, thousand feet. Okay, that, that is going to be a moneymaker to, to market like, uh, San Francisco, says San Francisco. Francisco, uh, said his markets go demanded anyway. Uh, what size is going to be?
If you go by this little parcel land and it's only three quarters of an acre and he has twelve units on it, Joan and I actually drove by it. It, this thing, it's, we walked it, I mean, we went like this and we were almost touching the bed.
Yeah.
Literally touched the building.
Even you say they may not build them, no one's going to buy them or whatever, somebody, somebody will rent something. So, am I, yeah, but, and thank you for the answer on that, I got that. And, um, on the last page, um, item K. A minimum of four hundred square feet of usable screened private outdoor space shall be provided for each unit.
So that I kind of took from another section of our regulations where you have multi-families, I think it was a, a um, the adult housing, I'm not sure which, which section I took it from, but, um, that's saying the, the purpose is, or intent is, you know, you have an outdoor patio. It's dedicated to the unit as opposed to walking out and being open and free to everybody else, it is the outdoor space that's for that. And so I just, I took the language from other sections.
That, that four hundred square foot is included in the maximum of a thousand square feet. So this is an additional.
It's outdoor space, so it's not square footage for the purpose of a, of a unit. Living space, it's not living space, it's, it's trying to meet the needs of quality of life.
Okay.
That people have outdoor space related to their, if it, you know, when you have apartment-style living, you have dedicated outdoor space.
So we're.
Townhouses would have a dedicated outdoor space, now you don't really provide for that in that this regulation, but.
So yours, so that would most likely be in front of the house because you're, we're asking for twenty feet in between each unit.
You could be behind or behind. It wouldn't be on the side. Unless they put more than twenty feet between. Okay.
Okay.
Or rather, I shouldn't say that, they could, they could have ten and ten between, you know, they, as long as it's a private space, but that's part of the site plan, as to how it would actually be designed, I don't claim to be able to, um,
Yeah.
To imagine every configuration somebody can come up with, we try real hard to figure out what somebody could possibly interpret. Um, but that's a great thought there because I hadn't thought about. Space between the unit and whether that would affect.
Yeah.
Our space or not.
Yeah.
Again, I think it depends on the design. And the topography as to where it can be, we can make reasonable space exist. Because we're looking at six, six, you know, dwelling units per acre, so.
Yeah. Tim, I'm sorry, Andre, you finished?
That's good.
Okay, Jim.
Okay, oh, uh, three B, uh, says twenty feet between units, right? I think that's what you wanted there, like ten and ten on each side, right?
No, twenty feet.
Twenty feet between units, so the proper useless line or property line. The unit's got to be at least twenty feet apart. So one side's ten foot, one side's ten foot, the other one, so the unit's got to be twenty.
They might put walkways or they might, you know, to get to a common area or.
Okay, but it's got to be twenty, between units, it's got to be twenties.
Between their outside walls.
Okay.
There would be twenty feet between the walls, however, we did have in there, um, that they could, you know, screen a small, I think I left it in there. Green in a small, like garbage area so that, you know, you can build something between.
Uh.
I kind of.
But then.
Yeah, and it's right, the rest.
And I.
And bulk, bulk, uh, table. Uh, this is twenty-five feet. Okay.
Where are you on this, where?
Uh, that's, uh, G two. Uh, the next page, I think.
Okay, G two, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, the side says twenty-five feet.
That's to the side property line.
That's a side property line, so, now, so, so. Okay, now I see the property line leave the words, okay, because I saw the property line words in front of it crossed out. And then I didn't see it again on property line, a button residential, okay, no problem, not property lines. I didn't see the second property line and that wording.
Oh, yeah, because I separated it out into one, two, three, four, like I.
Right.
Read more like our, the rest of our regulations, the the way it was um, in paragraph form is not the format we generally use in our zone, so I tried.
That's, that's fine, I just, I just want to make sure it's proper.
Regulations, so you could find side, front, side, rear, you know.
Okay.
Go through, and that's what we do, mostly we have chart dial, you know, regulations.
Um, can I ask you a question? I'm going to, uh, ask about, uh, same page that we were on, um, with, uh, his bulk requirements. Um, H, uh, I guess it's one. We talk about under square foot, a hundred square feet providing, uh, they're talking about, uh, I guess you're talking about detached accessory structures. So point one. Um, it says a hundred square feet provided they are limited to a single story with no wall greater than eight feet. And the cert, uh, certificate of zoning compliance is obtained with a minimum setback of twenty feet inside and the rear yards to be permitted, providing there's replacement does not encroach on the approved buffer. Um, so are you looking at one accessory building for the lot, for the whole development or per unit?
Possibly so, you think, or I'll ever many, no, there's not, so this does not limit the number of its total accessory. Although it could be for you.
I.
Be a bad idea to put in per unit, but I was trying to respond to.
It should probably be.
That you might want lawn mowers or gardening equipment or something else to be able to be stored neatly outside instead of in a, under a tarp.
But I think, yeah, no, and I agree with that, but I think it should only be one, not per unit. Because chances are you're going to have management, I don't, I can't see somebody going and having a lawnmower to do, you know, ten feet here and, you know.
And that was a response to.
Well, no, I under.
Fourth that you guys had and I.
I agree.
Landed where I could.
But I think if we're, because of the size of the lots that we're dealing with and the allowance for the houses to be up to six per you, per acre, I think it might be wise for us to limit it to an accessory, um, accessory pod or whatever you want, building to be for the care of the site.
So, so let me just explain a little further, then I, I might be concerned that a hundred square feet be enough. Because if you have people with their, they, they do have toddlers and they have that cozy coop and that little slide thing and something else, then that takes up quite a bit of space to put away. Um, that if everyone has to have like a cage inside of of an accessory, that may fit more than need of an accessory garage. Which is the second one, detached accessory structure, that would be bigger. Um, this one, this, the provision for one was in response to thinking they might want a private storage, something for there.
And that's going to.
So either way, I'm, I'm just trying to explain the.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, I.
Hearing the back and forth of, I have had, uh, from my experience as zoning officer, I would struggle with our is the developments in town that were units where then they were starting to put sheds and then you get to the point where are they changing their, um, impervious surfaces and everything else is an entire development? You kind of saw that when you saw the re-submission from Silver Ridge when they came back and said, but this is actually what ended up being out there twenty years later. Um, and so I was trying to provide language that actually help the committee, commission, the zoning officer and the, any resident coming in looking for an accessory structure. What, what are they allowed? So what they're allowed, I.
Yeah, I just.
Should, should think about, I encourage the ability.
What if you do?
Some language in here, even if it, or if it's language that says um, private accessory structure is not allowed, you know, if that's where you're going, I would encourage the use of some language that
Or if you want to.
Direction to the zoning.
Yeah, or if you want to do a single, um, structure for the entire development and uh, limit the number of square feet allowed per unit.
Yeah, that's, I would be more comfortable with that as opposed to having all these little, little pods show up all over the place. Because.
Like if there's. Enough, so does that fit under two? Where it's a detached accessory structural?
Well, no, because that would be.
Well, I think what Joan is getting at, I think what Joan is getting at is to have a single storage structure for the entire development. And so if it's going to be shared, um, use the same hundred square feet as the maximum storage area allowed per unit. So you don't end up with some monstrosity of a storage building. And have it be, um, kind of gauged by the number of units in the development. Hmm, the only thought that I had heading that direction, um, is an acre is a large parcel. Um, and if you do have children and toys and tricycles and wagons and so forth, and you use them daily or regularly or want to put them up at night or I mean, it, it might be more convenient to have that little hutch closer to the home or accessibility, shoveling, planting pots, you know, things that you would use on a regular basis.
Yeah. Well, no, I, but I guess if I was looking at one house on a single acre, but if I'm looking at six units, I, and a garage. But I, I, I just don't want to cover, I, I want, I don't want to cover the property with buildings. I want to make sure they still have some livable space and some green space or whatever. But I want to be sensitive to their needs and most, I, I mean, a lot of people, they get these garage and the first thing they do is they fill it with junk. I mean, how many, how many of your neighbors know that they parked the cars outside because there's no room in the garage? And I, and that's not a slight toward them, it's just the way we are as a civilization, we have a tendency to buy stuff and we stick it in the garage. Um, but, and so I'm thinking that with bicycles and stuff, I would never leave a bike outside, I'd walk it right into my house. Because of, you know, just society being what it is. So I can understand the point to want to store stuff like that, but, um, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to keep the development pretty. And maybe that's a, that's not a good goal, but, I mean, just, you know.
We're only talking about a shed that's ten by ten. You're not going to get.
Might be bigger than some of these houses.
Oh, no, no, they're ten by ten.
Yeah, but how many ten by ten sheds do you want? On top of the house, on top of the garage?
One per, per house.
Yeah, one.
So you got six houses, go be. Could be six sheds.
But then you're gonna have six garages. You gotta have six garages, so now you're looking at a house, a shed, a garage.
Have six garages, it's, it's a. It's a bank of garages that you, you did, this says in here.
Well, it is the same thing.
But uh.
I'm just saying that it should have a limit.
People, people put a shed on their property, just go one more than ten by ten, okay, that's just. Every shed that you see anywhere in, in, in Berlin uh is probably almost eighteen by ten.
But again, my, my point is, how big is their lot? I mean, we're talking about six units on one acre.
An acre, yes, yes.
So you have driveways and road.
Down to. Uh, okay, that one acre divided by six is what?
Three thousand is like seven thousand.
Thirty thousand divided by six, what is it?
Well, it's forty-three thousand.
Well, it's forty-three something, builder's acres, forty thousand. That's what the general thing is, forty thousand divided by six. So you're almost our seven lot, seven thousand square foot. Our seven lot is. Uh Manhattan Street East, uh Kensington, uh uh. All, all that Murray Heights there, that's all thousand foot lot, uh seven thou- seven thousand square foot lots. They all have sheds in the backyard.
You gotta have a, yeah, but a lot of these, a lot of these seven thousand are on a main street, they're all like. Just adjacent to each other, remember visually, you've gotta have a whole road come through, a whole driveway. I'm just saying, you're covering a lot of the surface.
You could put a driveway in, straight down the middle of lot, and three houses on each side of the driveway.
Okay, I'll.
So it's no different.
Okay, let's do it, four houses per acre.
Oh, no. I, I'm, I'm already going down this, I'm already saying all right to six, I was, I was arguing with eight before.
Well, I was talking five before, so I'm meeting you at six, but what I'm saying, you're not gonna, no, I don't want you covering up that land.
So, so forty-three thousand square foot, you got seven thou- you got seven thousand square foot lots. Or, or, or land, land use area, or land use area, whichever you wanna call it. Okay, uh minus the road, or whatever it is, driveway, road, whatever you wanna call it. Because this might be a dri- common driveways and six houses, okay?
Well, yeah, but it's gotta have to make a loop around.
It doesn't have to loop around.
Well, sure.
Into the property. Three houses on each side of the, the driveway.
Where's the snow gonna go? Where's your snow gonna go?
Like any other driveway, like any other driveways, you, you got, you got a common driveway, we have common driveways in our town all over the place. Okay, uh so if it's built that way. Uh you, you got three houses on each side of the, of, of a driveway. Uh probably go be a twenty-foot wide driveway or something.
Okay.
Uh you know, you're going to, you know, basically what they're gonna do is plow right, the snow right to the end of the, the driveway. Uh you know, uh that's what they're gonna plow.
All right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get this.
No, I'm just.
Go ahead.
I have another suggestion with regard to this, because I think what you're taught, the kind of structure that. Emma really mentioned, um where it would be a common storage building. It's within two, which has greater setbacks, cuz it's a larger building. The one, H one was written for, five H one was written for concept of individual. Storage units, and I know recently Dylan had, had to look a couple of things up with regard to. People that were applying for things, um and uh like. Typical rubber made ones, not the ones that come in on a truck as far as storage, but you might find those to be closer to a six by eight size. Or six by, yeah, six by eight, eight by ten, you know, is, is a little larger, but that's eighty square feet. You know, six by eight is even smaller, might fit a couple of bicycles and, you know, other things. But one of the um thoughts I have is instead to have it be within five feet of the house. So for instance, it's where those, the garbage cans get put. Instead of behind a fence along the side of the house, you put them into those kinds of storage sheds. But if it's within a couple of feet of the house, and I say five, because then you can mow around it and you don't get. Things living between it and the, you know, they might, you might put it right up against it, but at least gives you the opportunity to be able to mow around it. Um it's the bulk of it. Still visually with the house, but allows for those individually controlled. Um and it's small, those are, those are kinda small, so.
If you want.
Is the idea of the smaller ones, cuz the setbacks were written for less to the sides and rears. Main yacht, main property lines, property lines of the, the parcel. Um where once it gets to the bigger size, I would suggest from what I've heard and the feedback. Is that you want it to meet those larger setbacks, which is what two has, half the required distance. With site plan approval, et cetera, it's a larger building.
If you go.
Build, you know, it's a building, it's not a.
Okay, Andrew?
If it goes on the side of the house, that, that's cutting into the twenty feet between each home.
Yeah, that's what I was envisioning, that, you know, people could put their garbage cans along the side of the house behind a little fence.
Which takes away from any type of walkway that would be put in there, right?
I say, I mean, I went off the, my dad's development, which is what it is, it, there's twenty feet between the units. Pretty much each unit has a walkway. Think they're about four or five feet deep, fencing along the side of the house, and then a walkway outside of it, that's at least, that's like three feet. And then the next unit has it, and their walkways, some of them share their walkway, but most of them, because they, they are actually separate lot.
Okay.
Are just.
Yeah.
If you're talking a bank of garages, which I just saw on here. Okay, so a bank of six garages, it could be carport, it could be with a door on it. But bank with six garages, what a lot of the condo associations, uh condo condos do. Is put a little storage area in the back of the garage, so it's eight foot out more, nine foot out more with the garage. They put all their bicycles and everything in the back of the garage, if you don't want sheds, that's the way, way to get rid of the sheds, if you don't wanna do that. It's just, just required that the storage is in the back of the garage of the, the, the garage ports. Or garages, whatever, so there's only six garages, so it's not that much of a size of a building. Uh and you're going back, say, eight feet or nine feet, uh you know, and with a little door with a lock, lock on it. That you could put your stuff in.
Yeah, or cabinet in there, yeah, that's a better compromise.
That's a compromise.
That I would suggest that you edit is to eliminate.
All right, so we, okay.
Yeah, eliminate the sheds and say that the storage area in back of the, the.
Yeah, the garage is. Contain cabinets in the back or something, or whatever they wanna do.
Is that a good compromise?
That's a good compromise. I knew we'd get there.
Got close.
I only got, almost got before, before units per acre.
No, 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 no.
All right, come on, okay, anything else on this? I mean, other than that, I thought it was uh.
Only make.
Question, just really quick on item F, uh, uh, F, cuz I know I don't wanna go too late with this. Um just item F, when it talks about the affordability. Uh let me see, containing competence restrictions of perpetuity, which require the dwellings units be sold at. Or rented or below prices that would preserve the housing units for which persons and families pay thirty percent or less of income. Which such, where such income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the median income. Can we just sort of tighten that sentence up and this should may basically say. Uh with the affordability equal to.
So this, I used the language that was already there, which was really um reflective of statute. Um and we've used similar language, I didn't change it to the language we use in other provisions that we're trying to make more consistent.
Yeah.
Trying to make that the same consistent language, um but that's why I added the first sentence with the. Intent of supplying housing units that by, qualify as affordable in accordance with the statute is so that if that. Changes by um legislative action before you get to update it, it's the intent that is still there, that it meets. The qualifications, um we've had many discussions of those housing units that were approved. Back in the nineties and the language that they were approved under doesn't, didn't, doesn't meet. The adding our percentages.
Okay.
Our number.
All right. All right, that was the last comment I have, anyone else? Okay. Steve, Viella, do you have any questions?
I know.
No problem, no problem. All right, so the, any, any notions to make a motion from the commission here, commissioners available?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, great, we have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second? Second by Miss Miller, further discussion, all those in favor, those opposed, so moved. Okay, and we do not have to deal with Thomas Kokomo, because he's already been motioned to continue. Going on to the old business, and I know you're waiting for this, the Plan of Conservation and Development twenty twenty-three. So um we've all had a chance to give feedback, any. Motions?
I make a motion to approve with the, the uh changes to the. Fire department things uh as proposed, uh and the map, map uh showing where the fireplace apartments are, because that's wrong too. Uh but uh those changes to be made.
Yeah, with Mary.
Sure.
Okay, we're good on that, and acknowledgements will be cleaned up, okay, so we have the motion by. We have a second by Ms. Josie, further discussion, so all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so moved.
Yay.
And Steve, Viella? Okay, you got an eye on that, thank you, all right. Okay, yay. Well, all right, so you move on forward, all right, so then we go on? Quickly remind.
Our consultants leave, we do have a Plan of Conservation and Development meeting. Continuing the discussion of the zoning amendments next Thursday. And I believe we were going to post it as a combined meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, and that's July, uh that's. That's June twenty-second, I believe.
Yeah, we're not in July yet, although.
All right, and what time is that meeting, is that? What time? I don't, well, I'm looking at Francisco too, I'm thinking.
Six thirty, six thirty is what I have, yeah.
Is that what you have, Francisco? Okay, you guys said six thirty, commission's six thirty? All right, terrific, yes, all right.
Interrupt, but I.
Yay, let's all go home and have champagne, not yet, but we're almost done. We're almost done, we're almost done, okay, and now we're to the amendment for the planning and zoning staff for the regulations for section. Eleven DD planned instant residential infill development, okay, so what do we wanna do with this?
I make a moat.
Well, good night. Yep.
I make a motion, we continue uh for the, the couple uh revisions that we discussed tonight. Uh and put it on under old business next time, just for a vote. Inland.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna continue it?
Well, I just wanna continue it, for she can change those changes, make the changes, and then we vote on the next meeting, just bring it up and vote on her.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Sigma, we have a second. Oh, no second.
Okay.
I had a feeling, recent years.
Don't give it a second, that's fine.
You gotta, you gotta rescind.
Make a motion.
I think you just declared the motion fails.
Well, that's what I did, I said next.
That's all.
Did you wanna make, anyone else wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the proposed amendment um with the changes that we discussed this evening.
Okay, so we have a.
Do you want, do you need that to be specified, or we're, we're clear on that? Well, I think so um to remove paragraph H, five H one. And what, did we have another change?
And the other change was, no, we just had, actually just verifications.
Clarify um clarify that the uh um storage will be in. Within the garages for the units.
Yeah.
At the end of this sentence on detached accessory structures.
There's no detached structures anymore.
Such as the bank of garages.
No, private detached accessory structures permitted. As a final sentence after.
Yeah.
What will become H one, or not even have a two.
Yeah.
Won't have a.
She's gonna.
Detached accessory structures will not be allowed.
How two is going. Two becomes one, or no number at all.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, two becomes.
Yeah.
Banks of garages, storage of community maintenance, that's all accessory, right?
Yep, and just add a sentence at the end, no.
No private detached accessory structures allowed.
Oh, good to me.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're okay. We're with the changes as noted, all right, so we have the motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Miller, further discussion, so all those in favor, aye? All right, thank you, Steve, and, and he opposed, Steve, uh that was Steve Viella, voting aye. Okay, and no opposed? He's abstained, and did you vote, June? Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear, all righty, all righty. I believe you, all righty, so motion passes, it's approved, yay, another thing off of our list. And with that, uh planner comments, do you have any comments?
I have several, and I'm sorry for that.
No.
However.
That's okay.
Give me one second, cuz.
No, that's okay.
Messed up my piles doing that, and now I.
Okay, okay, sorry, um, okay. Okay, so I do need to make a clarification, um I think. We all got confused a little last month when we were making the, 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 when the motions were being made with regard to the. Um public hearing dates, the public hearings for sixteen.
Um, public hearing dates, the public hearings for sixteen seventy-six Berlin turnpike applications, they were called two-part applications. And, um, nineteen oh six Berlin LLC. Applications, um, the sixteen seventy-six is actually legal house living. The first couple of motions were on nineteen oh six Berlin LLC. For the text amendment and the site plan, and those were bundled. And the notice of decision noticed them both happening on July sixth, that was what. We were advising as staff, that's how, um. Myself, as well as corporation counsel, saw them coming through, it's, it's confusing when you listen to the tape. That those weren't the ones separated as opposed to that bundle being separated from the. The little house living applications as a separate bundle, that's what we were talking about separating. So, noticed, because we already sent that notice to the paper, that for July sixth. Or we already, we sent the notice of decision actually from that meeting. That July sixth will be the both applications for the text amendment and the nineteen oh six site plan. And then the July twentieth is the date that was set and noticed for the. Um, little house living, um, text amendment and site plan. The text amendment is the same, however, they were applied for separately and. We're just keeping them separate for now. It's the same text for both of them, so if you put them to the light, they're the same text. Um, we read them to each other, we checked, however. Each application is dependent upon the text, so they have to apply for the text in order to have the application be valid. The text is intertwined, so I wanted to get that straight because it was confusing when you listen to the recording. To know that that was what was set, but it was noticed as that. And I did check with our attorney and she was like, no, absolutely, those were the dates that were discussed, it just doesn't come across that way. And by unless an extension is received, both the applications relating to nineteen oh six have to be opened by. That first date of July sixth, unless extensions are received. Again, we don't really know how they're progressing at this point, as far as that goes, but, um, that's the scheduling. So that's the first thing, and I needed to clarify that because I feel like it was something I said that caused the confusion. So I wanted to make sure everybody's got that. Um, I want to let you know that. Um, well, let me, let's go with the inquiries first. Um, we did have an inquiry to put another discussion on the, on the commission meeting. Um, but maybe I'll, I don't have enough information yet, but, um. There's been inquiries with regard to three ninety-eight Chamberlain Highway, it's been the garden center use. It was Kensington Garden Center, a number of years ago, the commission, but, um. Quantified what would be allowed is at a garden center. And the inquiries are coming in for maybe adapting that a little bit, so with the, um. So we may be bringing to the commission another, a discussion item with regard to that. I would like to be able to put it onto an agenda and list it if, if the discussion's gonna happen with regard to that. Um, but there is some possible positive movement there. Um, we also have a require, uh, inquiry regarding, um, bottle and can, um. Um, return center, so what we found some towns have is they have in their regulations something called a redemption center. And that's, I think, the term that the state uses for that type of facility. Um, I've experienced one kind where it's very much like the one next door to. Um, that it's part of, say, Stop and Shop where it's just, you know. You, me, and everybody else going in and returning your bottles and cans, but there's evidently others in the state that are. A more large scale and they regularly get the Boy Scout trucks loads full and other truck loads full from. Collections, and so they operate that way. And so what I'm looking for is a little bit of feedback from the commission as to whether they would. Um, whether it won, if you've ever discussed it before and or somebody has some knowledge with regard to it. Because we were, we were trying to categorize the use in the regulations, is there a use? In the regulations that the intent was for that, something like that to fit under? Or, um, if somebody's looking to come in with something like that, should they be bringing forth a text amendment? And whether or not you would, um, whether or not we should be thinking about. Um. Separating it from something like a retail redemption center, which would be more that kind of thing that fits. In, that, it's more like the accessory uses that, um. Stop and Shop has as far as having them, or grocery stores and liquor stores have, or should we, and versus. A larger scale that needs to accommodate more regular truck traffic, or should we just call them all redemption centers and put them in? In all together, and whether anybody has any feedback or guidance, if you've had any experience with them where you can just kind of send us in a direction. There are some, in Connecticut, there are some. Where did you find one was? You found it, you have a couple.
Windsor, one, um.
I understand there are redemption centers, but I don't know the scale they are. So we know some of the towns have them, like, like Wallingford has one that's in a strip plaza, and we go to. Um, I know, um, I've been told East Haven or Haven have redemption centers, I don't know if they have the small ones or the large ones, we didn't get that far yet. I just kind of want to know what you guys are thinking about whether you, whether they are already considered, say, a recycling center. I don't think they're the same as a recycling center, but you guys may have said, no, no, those are the same as a recycling, I don't think they are. Right. Right. So we are talking about, so, yeah, and that's what we understand this inquiry is for the larger kind. Recent legislation that just changed this session? We just gotta know that stuff. There'll be a greater need will be coming up. All right, so we'll, I, I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing text amendment is what I'm hearing. Because it is unique and, and it is its own specific use, it's not falling into another category. That's, and that's really what I needed the guidance as to whether you had, um, I wanted. Yeah, and again, it would be a, a greater conversation, but, um, you know, and that would be up to anyone to decide if they wanted to. But, but we, the concerns have been raised. Um, I wanted to let you all know that there is, because this has been a problem that was brought up at. Other commission meetings, I'm not sure you guys have brought it up very much, but, um. The old Bennerup property on twenty-two fifteen Chamberlain Highway where the greenhouses are, has been sold this week. Was just sold, um, we understand and we don't have a lot of information yet. Um, reached out to the new owner, but that they're gonna be, uh, they plan to be in agricultural use. Will determine if it's one of the as of right uses or if they intend to do other things. Um, and we're all still working on, or we're hoping they're still working and we're still pushing. For them to work on moving the access and parking easement for the conservation area. To two lots south where, so that lot has had. A general access and parking easement so that people could, um, get to the trails that are to the east of the property. And we've had a lot of enforcement problems with the property being secured and you can't get in there, so. Okay, he, so he removed the locks, but he didn't open the gate. Well, well, hopefully he'll open the gate this weekend, we can, that what was happening in the past and with past operators of the site. There were conservation signs up that said parking for conservation, you know, for access to trails. And they would regularly disappear, get knocked down, still, you know, who knows where they went. Um, it was a constant, or a regular issue, um, what the, the gentleman who bought. The other properties south of there from Mr. Bennerup, um, worked with Conservation Commission and others. He's developed a little bit of a parking area and has a trail plan to get down, a trail to walk. Down through the conservation easement that's on that property and get down further. However, these are documents that the private owners have to. Figure out how to write up the documents and then present to the town so the town can accept the movement of the easement. And with this new owner, it looks like we might get some movement on that, so that's kind of exciting. And I like to tell you exciting things because we talk about a lot of bad things. You know, do you know how much twenty-two fifteen is? Now, that lot is not open space, that, that is not conservation area, the conservation, it's, it's only to park on it for conservation. I just want to make sure that wasn't a question.
That is a fourteen point eighteen acre lot in the P O D zone.
Um, the, um, the Y has started moving their dirt. We've had, um, we had one complaint last week, contacted them because of the trucks driving too. That was just driving too quickly, I think that's all that was, both the police and, and staff, um. Attempted to handle that. Today, we got a number of reports, the director of the Y as well as the, and that was for dirt in the road. For, um, the speed of the trucks, et cetera, Paulie went out, actually followed a truck that was not speeding. And, um, but the director of the Y and their, um. Instruction coordinator, uh, immediately both responded and Paulie met. I think he met them on site, but he certainly was out there and they were, we were all in communication, so it's being addressed rapidly and they're. Responsive, whether they're. So Camp Sloper in Southington is dredging the pond and the dredged material. Was approved to come to a property on Southington Road, just McCachi now. Um, across from Timberland, and there were very. Specific parameters put on the plan for the traffic, the making sure there's no dirt in the road, there's. No Jake breaks, oh, he, he immediately addressed the Jake breaks and the, um. Yeah, the, so those noise factors, the slamming tailgates, so, um. Actually, one of the commission members told me that they had heard the Jake breaks, they did not, I don't think the report included. Um, those other things, those, those weren't happening, but, but the, and the dirt certainly was. And then I had an inquiry, can you bring this one up, the Y? I mean, uh, Eversource, so Eversource just wants to make a slight modification to their fencing. And, yeah, it's because of the, um, just the orientation of things, I think. As they went out there to, to move the things around, um, it's not, it's the training facility. The second page shows the modification of the minor, the modification, Lizzie, I'll read it right off the plan. Relocation of the train link fence gravel drive and storage building in blue, so they're pulling the. And I, and I don't even want to say pulling it out because it's not really pulling it, I, it's, it's a very short distance. But because the commission was very specific, I didn't want to just say, you know, it's a minor adjustment and. I want to make you guys aware and make sure that there's not an issue, it's all still with, um, within. The open area, no disturbance of the existing tree line or anything else, that's still north of that, or. The top of that, I wish he'd put it on here so that, because I know that was a matter of concern. Um, unfortunately, I didn't get a hold of him to tell him I was going to try to get it onto the agenda, um. And just kind of. You, you can see, it's just a shift out and over a little here and there, um, and whether I can handle that administratively. Thank you, Phil, appreciate that, um, and. So Diadio has not gotten, so is, he has his, um, actually, he did get the sign off from the state. I'm not sure if he got complete sign off from the state yet, most of the delay, the lengthy delay on the project south of Demming Road. Has been permitting from the state, so that's been a, a real thing. I believe we have an active. Permit now, because they wouldn't even let the, his, the site for this to the south was the first phase. The gas station and, and store was, uh, they would not allow even one permit to go. Until they approved the entire thing, so that one, I believe they have started to. Um, come back to the town for moving forward with, and I think he needs to do a few other items to get. Uh, still allow these two, which is where he's got the, um, the multifamily units. And then as far as the one, um, up near the Acura dealership in Orsini, I know they've put in the foundations. I know at one time they were having trouble with supply, but I don't know why they've stopped. Wait, that, they had, we had reports for a while about supply. But now I don't know why it's continued, I would think the supplies by now. And the, I was gonna say, we, there was the assumption in the office that the increase of interest rates has may have slowed a couple of the. Um, excitement, some of the excitement. I, I think those conversations are trying to help with those. No, I did get that inquiry just this week, I, somebody else asked me that this week, so a conservation commission. So they asked the same question, I, we, um, one of, I believe one of those commission members noted that. The gas company was doing, doing their thing, um. Oh, okay. So we do regularly, and I, you know, I try to keep them in my brain, but we get. So we do regularly and I, you know, I try to keep them in my brain, but we get the um notices, either our office or the town manager's office or the engineering office, and sometimes we all get them, and sometimes one of them gets them and we alert the others. The utilities usually notify us if they're going to be doing work throughout town. I might have gotten one. I don't know. I don't know. But, but I do believe it's just, it's gas company and we really know approvals required, but we're trying to. Yep, yeah. But we didn't come up with anything too great, just a little pickets. They, they had ones that had a little, just the pickets between, yeah, they just show a little bit, but it's still a pretty rectangular. We, we had trouble finding anything with insulation, but yeah, not that we found examples are very well, but, but we'll um, we'll, we're continuing. I'm wondering if that's in my drafts. I'm wondering if the email to, the response to him is in my drafts.
I've seen.
It's been a, a busy week.
For, for gates, I've seen the ornate designs with the, the angles and the curves. But when it comes to longer border fencing, there's nothing really more ornate than just a couple of spires on each. Yo, yeah, yeah, there's.
Oh, I, I have not heard much. We, I only got one inquiry, which was not feasible in the other half.
Okay, Ms. George has the motion to return at nine thirty-five. Second by Ms. Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.